At this time, it's my pleasure to call your October 2021 meeting of your Hannover Borough Council order. Item one, the Chair requests that we all stand and recite our wonderful pledge of allegiance in unison and follow up with a brief moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and please be seated. Secretary Felix, may I have your assistants calling the roll?
Mr. Tezzi?
Here.
Mr. Hagberg?
Here.
Mrs. Monk?
Mr. Greenhold?
Here.
Mr. Crass? Jim, are you out there?
I think he's online. He's there.
There he is.
Mr. Lockard?
Here.
Ms. Francis?
Here.
Mr. Rechart?
Here.
Mr. Rowland?
Here.
Dr. Robb?
Here.
Solicitor Chilcus?
Here.
Mayor Whitman? Manager Dunford?
Here.
Secretary Felix, we have a call.
Thank you. This time in the agenda, we will move on to the proclamation and pinch hitting for Mayor Whitman will be the distinguished Dr. Robb.
Thank you, I'm excited. I've never read a proclamation before, so I will try to go as-
And you're distinguished.
Swiftly as possible and distinguished to yet, okay. There's an exciting event happening on November 6th, the Rising Against Hunger Day in Hannover, and I'm eager and really delighted to be able to read this proclamation. Whereas malnutrition is the single largest contributor to disease in the world and one in seven of the world's population do not get the food they need to live healthy lives. And whereas poor nutrition causes nearly half of the deaths of children under five, 3.1 million children every year. And whereas providing free nutritious meals to children in schools and orphanages as well as during times of crisis has proven to be a simple and efficient way to increase school enrollment, reduce absenteeism, improve learning outcomes, and reduce hunger. And whereas Rise Against Hunger is an international hunger relief organization that distributes food and life-changing aid to the world's most vulnerable, mobilizing the necessary resources to end world hunger by 2030. And whereas Rise Against Hunger utilizes a well-developed, cost-effective methodology of training and organizing volunteers to pack a large number of meal packets in an enjoyable atmosphere. And whereas members of the greater Hannover area have previously sponsored three such volunteer meal packing events since 2012 and have already packed over 115,000 meals to feed the hungry. And whereas the 2021 Meal Packing Committee has been working for months to raise $17,000 from Hannover residents, businesses, service clubs, and churches for this year's event. And whereas hundreds of Hannover area volunteers will gather the first Saturday in November to pack 50,000 meals for distribution by Rise Against Hunger. Now therefore, I, Sue Ann Whitman, Mayor of the Borough of Hannover, York County, Pennsylvania, hereby proclaim Saturday, November 6th, 2021, as Rise Against Hunger Day and charge all citizens of the Hannover area to support this worthwhile and important cause. And I'm pleased that there are some members of the committee that are here this evening who have been working very diligently towards this cause and are excited about that Saturday, right?
Absolutely.
Right, thank you.
They're all invited.
Please come, yes, it's fine.
November 6th, come pack meals.
It's come.
Did you want to hand them the proclamation?
This proclamation, I thought, I'm supposed to do something like that, aren't I? Okay, sure, I'd be glad to do that. If you want to come up here, I'll hand this to you.
You don't have to do it. Yeah, it's awesome.
We need somebody to ring a gong.
Hey, I have invitations for everybody. If you, I'll tell you what, I'll put them here and you can just-
That's great, okay. First proclamation, maybe I should have had it ready while you were buying my pie. That's sorry about that. This is going to take a long proclamation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your efforts on the-
Thanks a lot. And I just want to take a second to thank the Borough and the mayor and the police department and actually the entire community. This is our fifth event and actually with the meals we're packing this year, it'll be close to 300,000 meals we packed in those events and-
Just here in Hannover, 300,000?
300,000 meals. And, you know, it's really, it's really a community event, so I, this is, this is wonderful and appreciate the support that the Borough and the community has always shown, so thanks.
Thank you. And if any of you have any time to volunteer or just go over Saturday morning, that Saturday morning, St. Matthew's, see what goes on, it's fun. It's St. Matthew's.
At St. Matt's in the, in the fellowship hall.
They're handouts right there, talk about it, yeah.
We'd love to have you come.
It's just good to see what happens, this is a fun atmosphere. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, we will move into the preliminary public comment portion of the meeting and I'll open it up at this time for anyone in attendance. You can speak first. We request you abide by our ground rules, that being that you come forward, so I don't see a microphone, but, so we can, we can hear you, tell us your main-
There's one on the table there by Nana.
You can't see it, next to Nana. Yeah, right here, yeah.
And tell us who you are and where you live and what's your nature of your issue.
Or you could sit in darling's spot.
That's good, that's a good reaction.
Future council member.
There you go, looks good.
Someone can take a picture.
You're all good.
Okay.
But he's in the camera, man, he's got it down.
You can see, he's good.
I like it.
Go ahead.
I'm Andrew Non, I live on 39 Sprinkle Avenue and I'm 15, employed and a taxpaying resident. And I'm here to raise concerns regarding the gas line construction on my street. And my first concern is with the sidewalk repair job. The result is appalling. The sidewalk was completed in July and it has started cracking back in September. The cracks run the whole width of the sidewalk and around 1/16 to an eighth of an inch thick. Most of the rest of the new sidewalk is already spalling, which means it will crumble apart in just a few years. Also, when they cut up my neighbor's sidewalk to put in the ADA accessible sidewalk, they left the slurry all over her remaining sidewalk, making it forever stained and look sloppy. And while we're on the topic of ADA accessibility, none of the sidewalk corners are ADA accessible. They were more accessible before the project. The curbs are all around two to three inches off the pavement, some even higher. And now I'd like to talk about the concrete backfill job.
Wait, the curbs you're referring to are the standard curbs or the ADA curbs?
The ADA curbs.
Oh, okay, thank you.
The backfill was done poorly. They eat their lunch, then they threw their trash into the trench next sidewalk and backfilled right over it. And the dirt they put in was rocks. It was brown rocks, yay big, and they just threw it right over to water boxes and everything. And they scarcely threw down grass seed and left it like it was a job well done. We are the only street not to have straw to cover the seed. We had to go out and buy straw and more grass seed if some areas didn't even get the seed. Also, when they backfilled around the new gas meter for my house, they didn't do it right. Next day, when we got a good rain, it sunk three inches like a sinkhole and flooded my basement. And my biggest concern I have is with the street. We are only, we are one of very few streets that have not gotten paved after a gas line job. And our street is very worthy of paving. It's only 950 feet long and has over 25 cuts in it. That's around a cut every 25 to 35 feet. And it's not just the cuts, the equipment put numerous potholes in the street and tar and concrete are spilled everywhere. And the job to patch the cuts is awful, they're more like speed bumps. And some of the patchwork has potholes several inches deep. I'd like to say as a taxpaying resident that I am enraged. I'm tired of my street and the poorer section of town getting the short end of the stick. The other day, I noticed that an alleyway with only one or two cuts was getting a full repaving job. I'm tired of getting the short end of the stick and I think we deserve better. And I have two requests. One, I would like to see the sidewalks repaired properly and I'd like to see our street get a full repaving. And I expect nothing less, is this what everyone else has gotten? Thank you.
Thank you.
AJ, do you have any input on that as far as timelines and stuff?
Sure, and I'll get in touch with you. So some of those are the gas company's responsibility and some of the Borough can help with. Sprinkle Avenue is expected to be repaved and unfortunately, the folks on Sprinkle aren't the only ones affected by this or the timeline of the paving. It's kind of, the community has all shared the hurt together with the, with the rough temporary patching. But the good news is, in the end, you will have a better street. And that's why they left room at the ADA ramps to bring the new, the new pavement up to the proper level for those ADA ramps. But I'll get your information from you and we'll get you filled in on everything that's going on.
Thanks AJ.
Would you, would you be interested in participating in any of the Borough committees or whatever? Because, you know, someone like yourself, we would, we would like to have to be involved. And you can leave that with AJ, but we'd like to talk to you some more about how you-
Yeah, maybe we can swap info and stuff, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else in the, sure, sir?
Do you want me to speak from here or am I-
You just come forward and stand.
You can sit next to Nana and be-
Wherever you're comfortable.
Hi, I'm Matt Non, I'm a resident of 39 Sprinkle Avenue. I'm Andrew's father, so partially here to support him. But I am here, and I want to be clear, I'm not here to just raise complaints. I am concerned regarding the ongoing utility work throughout the Borough. Particularly the work, the associated permitting, the notices, and in particular, safety. Again, I am a resident, I'm also a construction industry professional with more than two decades of experience, both in the field, in practice, as well as in higher education. The Borough has strict requirements for permitting for excavations. It's contained in Chapter 313 of the Borough E Code. Permits are required except for defined emergencies and there's a limit of 10% over the defined thresholds or limits of disturbance. Chapter 313 also stipulates notices to property owners and tenants that affect use of their property. That is a Borough notification requirement. Additionally, applicable laws dictate proper traffic control for utility work and street closures. In the summer of 2021, while the north end of Sprinkle Avenue was under construction by Kinsley and subcontractors, there was planned electrical work which took place in the alley behind Sprinkle Avenue for a two-hour period, both the alley and Sprinkle Avenue were completely blocked, meaning there was no access for vehicles from residents, and heaven forbid if there was a medical emergency. This problem persists, which is why I'm here. On October 20th, the same situation was repeated on the south end of Sprinkle Avenue. The south end is closed for utility work, the alley behind it was closed by Glow Fibers' contractor. Again, on this past Monday, the alley was blocked, Glow Fibers' contractor, no signs, no controls, no notification. I'm concerned this is a broader problem. The Borough requirements, the Borough code does require notification. The draft franchise agreement posted on the Borough website with Glow Fiber says no permit is required for routine maintenance. I believe this directly conflicts with the code. Look, I do appreciate Mr. Hagberg, I reached, I reached out to him, he spoke to me, Mr. Grimm spoke to me, you know, I do appreciate that. I realize Mr. Grimm, as he told me, there's not much he can do. He said to me, "Kinsley works routinely outside their limits of disturbance and follows up later." But the Borough will still enforce its requirements, they can't, they have trouble with Kinsley, but they will on smaller contractors and homeowners. Mr. Grimm told me he has limited staff and help and if it's bad now, it's only going to get worse when they do Broadway. And Broadway, I was offered that Glow Fiber would call me when work was taking place near or adjacent my property. I realize people in this room don't have that control, but I wasn't ever notified. I'm just simply concerned. Hannover is a great place to live, I've been a resident more than 17 years, I just feel this is an area where Hannover is falling short on safety, sewer chips to taxpayers, residents, and visitors, and I would like to see some improvement in that area. Thank you.
Specifically, what would you like to see change, I mean, put in this spot?
Sure, no, that's okay.
What would you-
I'd like to see notification provided to the residents. That was not done. I realize Kinsley was going to notify us, they did come around, they put a hang tag, I called their construction coordinator that day, said, "No problem, can you just give us?" "Oh, we will." That afternoon, the street was closed, he said it won't take place in two weeks. I called their construction coordinator, I didn't know they were closing your street, which I found a little concerning. So, I went back, called them again, at that point, you know, a few days later, same thing, street closed, no work, other times, no signs. I gave up at that point with Kinsley's construction coordinator. My other concern is, I believe the Borough has some duty to the residents if there are multiple utility projects particularly on the same street or adjacent streets to notify the residents and enforce the permitting requirements. I realize the Borough is short-staffed, I can't, we can't ask for miracles for people that don't have the resources.
Well, I'm right, it's, it's, you know, it's utilities and they use subcontractors and whatever, I'm not looking for excuses, but you, your beef, if you will, is the lack of advanced notification to the residents where XYZ construction work is going on, especially if it's a, I guess, on a dead-end sort of street where you don't, you can't get in.
Well, not even dead-end, if you have a street and a parallel alley and both are closed completely and blocked by vehicles, I'm not saying just cones can be moved, but a vehicle block and a vehicle block, I believe you have a bona fide safety concern. I do think this is done in other municipalities, other, if you want to say, research campuses and things like a town or a city where notification, utility work is coordinated to avoid these types of things, I just think that's a basic expectation. Think it would go a long way in improving safety, more than anything else.
Is it your interpretation of our code that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take Kinsley out of it because they're involved, we'll say Columbia Gas, that if Columbia Gas is doing work on their facilities, that we notify you as well as them?
It doesn't say, this is regarding the streets.
I sound like that's what, it sounds like Kinsley did a bad job and you want us to do Kinsley's job for them.
If you issue a permit to Kinsley.
Hold them to it or-
Yes, hold them to it, which that section includes the Borough.
Well, that's an interesting process, so perhaps part of our permitting process should include-
Yeah, we, our oversight of them-
I don't know if it does or doesn't, but-
AJ, yeah, are we, am I getting it?
Believe me, I would love to do it. It is impossible. They give us an idea of where they're going to be for the next three summers, and if they find a bad pipe when they're in a street, they're going 90 degrees that way instead of straight on like they told us. They are regulated federally, not by us, so our permits are almost kind of like courtesy to us to at least give us some information of what could be happening. But yes, we do not know, just like, sir, you called the Kinsley supervisor to see where's, and he didn't know, so if the Kinsley supervisor doesn't know, I'm not going to know.
But AJ, the question here is like, how do we collectively, how do we make it work? Because I get it, and the only thing worse than the utilities- We're doing it the absolute best we can. Right, I get it. And the only thing worse than the utilities would be the railroads, because I know that that discussion's going to come up with the railroad crossings.
Correct. That's a whole different statute, that goes right away in access for railroads. My concern is that the Borough says we can't do anything about this.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't buy that, I mean, we need something, I'm not sure what it is, because even the inconvenience aspect of it-
And I look, if there was an incident, if there was a safety incident or accident, there was an injury or fatality, the Borough would probably be a party to that, and I can't think the Borough would want to sit there and say we can't do anything about it.
Well, there's a reason we have fire stations on both sides of the railroad paths.
Is there any other questions for the gentleman? Obviously, we have, we have committees that we can, and staff that we can bring this to, but is there any other?
No, I appreciate you listening to my concerns, that's all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We certainly weren't aware of-
Sure.
I have no idea.
I think that frequency is way more than we realize, and I think it's just this individual finally coming forward. I think he's speaking for a lot more people than just one street.
Right, and to his point, it's the same with the railway crossings, closing is, you know, just like at Facebook, not worse.
It could be an example of where our borough, but we might not be able to tell them what to do.
I mean, absolutely. It's probably-
Okay, anybody else in the room for public comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask for assistance opening us up to the online following.
Hi Bill, this is Laura Cesari Hite, 7 Dart Manor Court. I have three comments that I'd like to have taken consideration of in the agenda. Thank you for attaching all of the details for the agenda. On the social media policy, I have two questions when you review it. One is, how does social media comments tie to recusals since there is no recusal policy? And the second thing is, if under the Pennsylvania Ethics, a citizen of the Borough asks for review, does the council hold to 60 days to get back to a citizen about an ethics violation under the social media clause? So when we review that, I would like to have some insight. My second question is on the short-term rental policy that is under review. The agenda is silent on the next steps for the approval process, I'm hoping that we can get clarity about what that is.
I'm gonna have to ask you to go back to number one, and I, and I've got, we have our staff here. As far as what you're asking for, I saw some, I don't know if we're getting it, so can you touch upon that again?
So, in the meeting agenda, there are attachments. And there is an attachment on a social media policy for the council. The attachment is silent on the connection between comments of council members to recusal policies. Currently, the council does not have a, an official recusal policy, so that's number one. Secondly, is if a citizen of the Borough has a concern on the administration of that policy against a vote by the council, what is the review process and is that, is that covered by the Pennsylvania Ethics outline of 60 days for review and investigation?
That would be Tim. That'd be Tim, ask Tim.
But the policy should be clear. The policy should be clear as to how it ties to recusal and it should be clear on how a citizen can ask for an investigation.
Well, I believe right now with, as you pointed out, we don't have that recusal policy, so I think, if I'm hearing you correctly, you're, you're asking why the proposed governance policy doesn't or how it does, and it currently doesn't because we don't have that policy you're alluding to. Obviously, I'm hearing the, if, if the rest of it is we should, I've heard that part, does that-
Well, it's silent, it's silent as to how participation in social media pertains to the ability of a council member voting. And I think it needs to be active in that effect. And secondly, if a resident has a question about the ethics, does the Borough Council owe the resident, under the Pennsylvania Ethics, a 60-day investigation and a response? Is there a formal process? And will you respond to any ethics concerns?
We're, we're gonna take that second concern and refer that to our solicitor to, to research what we have, and we will, at our next meeting, report that as a finding, I think, now that you've raised the issue.
Can we table this?
Yeah. Anything else?
The, the other request I have is to be formal in the policy review on the short-term rental. It's, I, it is not obvious from the minutes or from what is shared about how that will be reviewed and taken into the zoning ordinance. I'm asking for clarity.
So there will be an advertised hearing?
Yes.
So there will be an advertised hearing where that's reviewed?
This is just to advertise it.
This just goes to back-
So we have to pass a motion that says we're going to advertise the hearing, and then the hearing, which is public, is, is where all of that's reviewed?
And there's a public review, period. So we're not passing it, we're getting, we're starting the process.
It's part of the process, it will be advertised and it will be public.
Okay, and it would be helpful to have that in your minutes and in what you share, right, to just be clear.
It's probably in the planning, planning commission.
It is not in the planning minutes that were shared online, and I just think, you know, transparency is important.
So do we, so, anything else?
No, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else online or telephoning in?
We'll probably table that, social media policy. I would, I'd table it until we investigate.
Okay, at this time, we'll close the public comment portion of the meeting and get into the agenda, item seven, that being the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve it?
So moved.
Second.
And there is a second, is there any further discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of its approval signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving into reports of our standing committees, starting with Council Workshop and Finance, Dr. Robb.
Thank you, President Rechart. First, I'd ask for consideration of a motion to afford the LBS Maintenance Facility Roof Replacement 2021 Capital Project Bid to J.S. Young &amp; Sons Incorporated in the amount of $71,650.
Seventy-one, 71,000, not million. He would be very happy with you.
Oh, we would.
We wouldn't be.
Is there a second, second for 71,000?
71,000 going, yeah.
All in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Secondly, consideration of a motion to approve the stipend for the Human Resource Manager to Service Interim Treasurer slash Interim Relations Manager effective October 1, 2021 in the amount of $2,000.
So motion.
Motion and a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And consideration of a motion to approve the filling of the following recently vacated positions. First, a patrolman in the police department with compensation set per the collective bargaining agreement. Secondly, administrative assistant at the library at an hourly rate of $81 per hour. And thirdly, a building permits manager, zoning officer, and Department of Planning and Engineering within the salary range of $65,000 to $75,000.
Or can we take these in it separate?
Oh, sure, I can do that. I will go back and I will go back and change my motion. First of all, consideration of a motion to approve the patrolman in the police department with compensation set per the collective bargaining agreement?
So motion.
Second.
Discussion?
How are we paying for it?
Who's that again, I'm sorry.
Counselor Funk, I heard first.
Can I clarify, are these, these are recently vacated positions, so these are already budgeted for?
Says recently vacated positions, yes, they are, recently vacated or soon to be vacated.
Perfect.
Right. Thank you.
Other questions or discussion? Calling the question, all in favor of, again, to be clear, printed agenda item A only, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Robb?
Okay, secondly, consideration of a motion to approve the filling of administrative assistant at the library at an hourly rate of $18 per hour.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, is there a discussion required for that? All in favor of printed agenda item 3B, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. Two opposed?
Charlene and Hill, I'm sorry.
Counselor Greenhold, motion passes. Dr. Robb?
And thirdly, consideration of a motion to approve the filling of the vacated position of building permits manager slash zoning officer in the Department of Planning and Engineering within the salary range of $65,000 to $75,000.
So motion.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And lastly, consideration of a motion to authorize a Borough Manager to prepare the 2022 budget with the addition of one Public Works employee, one policeman, patrolman, and no tax increase.
So motion. Oh, okay, somebody already motioned?
Yeah, we got it.
Obviously, right?
Discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. I have two nays, any other nays?
Just go conservative table over here.
I want them, just how are we paying for it? That's all I want to know.
Reserves, we're using reserves for recurring expenses like salaries because that's-
Motion passes.
I would like to revisit number two because there's an error in it.
That's what I thought, I'm not-
Yeah, there's an error in it. So that should be $2,000 monthly.
I thought that was monthly, I'm-
Right.
Was that, was that understood?
Yes.
That was understood.
But it should be corrected.
It's just corrected, yeah.
Yeah, I could, I could do it again.
Amend your motion to include the monthly.
For two, that, because that motion would be $2,000 monthly.
And I motion, yes.
Okay, so we, we're adding the monthly to it. Everyone clear on that?
Can we vote again?
Discussion? All in favor of adding the addition of monthly to two, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Oh, I'm sorry, that was my part, part of the, of the, the business proceeding. Thank you.
Thank you. We will move into planning and engineering. Mr. Hagberg?
Thank you. Consideration of a motion to approve the following street address changes. Old address, 22B West Walnut Street and 24 West Walnut Street. New address, 24 West Walnut Street and 26 West Walnut Street.
So motion.
Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. If you want to move into public works?
I will do.
Okay.
Consideration of a motion to approve a large equipment purchase with three-year leases to own for a single axle dump truck in a backhoe with BCI capital to be paid from all funds relative to the equipment planned use at annual interest rate of 1.35 and a total three-year expenditure of 297,460.
So motion.
Discussion for questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Consideration of a motion to approve a large equipment purchase with five-year leases to own for a tax, a tandem axle dump truck and a trash compactor with BCI capital to be paid from all funds relative to the equipment planned use at annual interest rate of 1.55 and a total five-year expenditure of 402,616.32.
So motion.
All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. We'll move into water and sewer. Counselor Francis?
Oh, that's a good question.
Well, you can, my.
I haven't heard a nay. That's what I'm listening to.
No nays for me so far.
Okay, thank you.
He's there.
Counselor Francis, water and sewer, if you would?
Yes, I am asking consideration of a motion to approve the purchase of filter plant server 2022 Capital Project from Control Systems 21 of Dillsburg, Pennsylvania at a cost of $87,150.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Counselor Francis. We'll come into public safety here. Counselor Rowland?
All right, so first is consideration of a motion to approve a letter to the P.A. DOT requesting brake retarder prohibition within the borough limits.
So motion.
Hey, other discussion on this one? I know we've been talking about this one.
Yeah.
Need it.
We need it. That's all I can say.
All in.
I do have a question. How is this enforced?
This is, this is, right now, starting.
That's a brilliant question.
Process.
Chad here?
Well, we'll figure that out. It's, you gotta get it done first.
We have to, we'll figure it out. Is it just signs or is it actually?
Signs and signs, like other boroughs and towns that you see on, on brake retarders.
Is there new signs now?
No.
No, you can't just, you can't just put up a sign.
Well, today, there's no regulation against it.
There's a, there's a process, and we're starting the process with customer requests.
And don't they send signs to the trucking companies?
Yes, there are streets, but they're not our streets.
Don't we send information to the trucking companies as well, so they know?
Yeah. Okay, I need a, I need a vote on the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Rowland?
Second one, considering consideration of a motion to approve the following requests for the police chief to collect, to conduct traffic studies at the following two intersections. First is George Street and Washington Avenue. And the second would be Baltimore Street and Walnut Street.
Second.
There is a second?
Second.
I think it speaks for itself, so there shouldn't be questions. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Opposed?
Who was the second on that though?
Second was Dr. Rupp. Motion passes.
I believe that concludes my. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. We will move to. We will move to page three, and we'll move on to governance. Counselor Lockard?
Thank you, Mr. President. Requested consideration of a motion to approve the amended social media policy for elected officials and appointed members of public bodies.
I agree that we table that until we hear back from our solicitor on a question brought up tonight about recusals.
I will second that, refusals.
Okay, so I will, I will handle the motion to table first. So that will be our point of discussion, tabling it. I do have a motion and a second to table.
Yes.
I think we should move it forward. I'm not sure how that work, I'm not sure procedurally how that works.
Well, we're in discussion phase of tabling the motion, so.
Okay.
Who has questions or?
Well, our, Bill, our solicitor is gonna check on this, correct?
I'm going to, I believe I'm going to be directed to respond to the question that was posed during public comment.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Tim.
Yeah, I believe the question alluded to a, an ethics policy for the assumed council, because that's how she was speaking, that I don't believe we necessarily have. So referencing it to this document is hard at this point, because we don't have that, so.
But the follow-up, apparently, within a 60-day period must be some PA regulation.
I would prefer we move.
Someone smarter.
Instead of redoing it later.
I'd prefer we move it forward and, and enhance it in the future if necessary.
But you do, it's a point.
Whatever.
That's a point.
You know?
I think we will do that once we get information from our solicitor.
A, a, a problem now that needs to be addressed and anything else is just delaying the inevitable.
Counselor Lockard, you made the motion. Would you like to speak to the?
No, except that I think that's, we're tying a lot more into it than what it actually was originally intended to be, but that's fine.
Yeah.
We want it to be right.
Well, I'd like it to be as thorough as possible, so that we don't have to go back and remedy it within a month. But when we started out, it seemed simplified enough, and then, of course, when the lady came on and added a few of her own ideas.
Right.
Yeah, no problem. We can take it back, and it can all be checked out, sure.
Otherwise, you're just gonna end up with two or three, you know, more policies than maybe one would take care of it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm hearing more sentiment to pull it back, so I'm, I'm gonna call the question this time again. The, the, what we are voting on is the tabling of the motion. So all in favor of tabling signify by saying aye.
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 A nays?
Nay.
One nay? Any other nays?
Who was the nay?
Me.
Oh, hi Scott, okay.
The motion to table passes, so we will move on from that.
Actually, while we're still talking about it, I wanted to call out, while, because I had plans to do so prior to it being tabled, but I just want to inform the public while I'm still able to do so about this policy. There's verbiage in here that I think folks should know about if they haven't read it. So one of the egregious things that this policy says could happen if, if an elected official communicates on social media is a, another person's reputation on council, which is incredibly vague. The enforcement, if someone on council feels like their reputation has been tarnished, is a public censure of the public official that committed such a heinous offense as decided by a majority of borough council. Thoroughly, they can also be, have civil action taken against them to recover the costs of investigating and documenting any violation of this policy. So essentially, if I go onto social media and I make an accurate and thorough and truthful claim, but it hurts another council person's reputation, the majority vote on council would then silence me from being able to inform my constituents in my ward of the factual and truthful violation of a sunshine act or, you know, misappropriation or whatever it might be. And then I could be censured from doing so. I think it's absolutely, the vagueness of it couldn't be, it's, it's insane. So I just wanted to call that one small piece of this thing that is half-baked at best, clearly, half-baked at best. And I think we should do way more work on it than, than that one thing. I think, quite frankly, I think council members can easily hide behind this. It says even in there, it encourages council members to keep it in-house. If you have a problem or if there's an issue you find that's going on with the government, our government, you're encouraged to just, just keep it between us and not put it out there.
I'm sorry, it doesn't say that. It doesn't say that. It says borough council encourages all officials to resolve issues or disputes outside of social media. It doesn't say.
Define an issue, define an issue and define a dispute.
We're trying to manage childish behavior here. This is ridiculous.
I would differ. Okay, so it's.
I think that was misunderstood. What it all boils down to is that if you have false, if you're, if you're speaking falsely, you would never be brought before council unless you are creating a disturbance that is falsified. Therefore, it would be brought to council, because it's creating dissension.
Okay, so if you have a policy that says that that only happens if it's false.
One, one at a time, please.
It doesn't say that.
No, it doesn't say that.
I, I'm gonna have to ask if this is leading to any business. If not, it's, it's not.
Let's go. Take it back to committee.
Comes back to committee.
It's, it's been pulled. Obviously, there are a majority of council present this evening casting their vote to pull it. Feels that there are some issues with it, and it will go through the process once again, and hopefully we get it right.
Just as long as possible.
We do have to, still understanding committee reports, we have to move on to the planning commission, and that would be Counselor Hagberg?
Thank you. Considerate, consideration of a motion authorizing the borough solicitor to prepare the proceedings for the amendment to the Hanover Borough zoning ordinance to address short-term rental uses.
I would certainly second that.
Any discussion required here? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. I don't believe the mayor has given a report to be read into the record in her absence, so we'll catch up with her next month. I'm sure she'll report on the last two months. Other matters listed in the agenda, for those of you still following along, would be the, looks like the committee and meeting involved principally for the month of November. And in case anyone needs reminded, there is a Halloween parade tomorrow night. Come on out.
Get your chairs out. Get your chair out.
Yeah, you can, the second I bang the gavel, you can officially put your chairs out. Just kidding.
Turn one out already.
All right, we will open.
We need Maggie back, Mayor Maggie back to, I'm not, I don't mean that anything against Sue, but to be the, the chair police.
Chairperson, okay.
As I've got them piled everywhere.
All right, we're gonna open up one more time for public comment, starting with those of you who came out tonight to see us. Anyone in the room wish to speak one last time? We covered you pretty well the first time. Community Media, will you help me open us up?
Those joining us via Zoom, you're able to unmute yourself if you'd like to address council's public comments.
So, Bill, this is Laura again.
Yep.
For clarity, the passage of the short-term rental for Tim, the solicitor, to move forward with, what is that timetable, just for clarity of the citizens of the borough?
I'm gonna ask, Solicitor Sholtest, he'll speak to that. I don't know if we have a timetable.
We, we don't have a timetable. The municipality's planning code sets forth what the requirements are for the borough to enact a zoning ordinance amendment. We intend, and, and that process involves a tremendous amount of public notice, and we intend to follow that, just like we followed it in the past, so. There, there's no specific timetable. I need to prepare the ordinance itself. I need to provide notice to all of the relevant parties, schedule either two public hearings or one public hearing, and we'll just follow that process.
So, Tim, for clarity, where will the process be posted on the borough website?
Within the borough website? I have no idea, but.
Or where, where will it be posted, for clarity?
Thor, would you respond? I, we can, either of us can respond.
It'll be on the calendar. It'll be on the newsflash. It'll be on Facebook.
Illegal advertisement.
Like we normally do, and we do have to, we advertise that in the newspaper too.
You also have the ability, just in case you don't know, on that borough website to sign up for alerts. To follow that will send you automatically minutes, agendas, calendar items. It can be really helpful, just in case you weren't aware of it.
I wasn't. Thank you, Janice.
Sure.
Anything else, Laura?
No, thank you, and thank for your consideration to call the social media policy.
You bet. Anybody else online or on telephone connection? Seeing none, we'll close that and request a motion for adjournment. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Crass.
Go back to your fire.
How goes the fire before we lose you? Good?
It's outstanding.
Okay, all right. All in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you. Go put your fire out.